All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the December 6th, 2023 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway and we did have one person sign up. And I think what we'll do since the item that she wants to bring up is actually on our consent. So instead of having her come up during consent, if everybody's fine, I'll just have her come up and speak on the topic now. And then if there's anybody else that didn't sign up, we'll catch you at the end. So Bonnie Matter, if you want to come up? Lot, lot, a big crowd tonight.
Yeah.
I wonder why?
Yeah.
Director of Public Safety.
Okay.
All right.
Bonnie Matter, 6649 in Skip Avenue South Cottage Grove. And yes, I'm here to just ask a question, maybe a few questions about the local area sales tax. The contract that is, you send materials out, it's on the consent agenda. So you've determined who you're going to work with on this, and that's great. It's about educating the public, not influencing, educating. Wonderful. But it's $38,000. And really, if you're getting everything that's in that, what it says you're getting, that's awesome. So that includes the development, the design, the production, et cetera. Is that correct? That's all I want to know. And if it's not, what an estimate is for whatever it's going to take to implement that plan.
Okay. Do you want to bring that, you want to mention it now?
Mayor, members of the council, I think it'd probably be best if we have Bonnie Matter to speak with our Parks Director. She could go over the contract in more detail to answer those specific questions.
Okay. So that would be speaking, obviously, with Zach.
Yes, I understand. But it was all spelled out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it wasn't all spelled out. That's all.
Well, there's, there's the, the contract. And just for the public to be aware, so on our consent agenda this evening, we are looking at hiring a company, if you will, that is going to do information to the public regarding a local option sales tax, which we are going to put before the voters next year during the election year. And the purpose of that is to look towards funding certain projects at parks that have been ongoing. The Mississippi Dunes Park, Hamlet Park, River Oaks Golf Course. That's it. That's it. Yeah. I had to make sure that I got the three. And so we're, we interviewed a couple firms and based on the feedback and what we got from those firms is, as this matters saying, the council is recommending approval of this particular firm to be, to be hired. Now, it isn't, I will say, it won't be covering the, the, I'll say, the amount of money that's going to be spent, obviously, on the parks. Obviously, that comes from the sales tax.
Of course not.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that the $38,000 covers this campaign.
I would believe that's the answer, but I'll make sure that they know that for sure. Basically, what was in that printout that, if you read through the packet?
Yep.
It's pretty impressive. I mean, that's why we-
Very impressive.
And very thorough.
Everyone should go read this.
Yeah.
Very detailed. It's excellent.
That's why we chose them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. And then the other thing is the University of Minnesota study. Can I just access it through the?
Yeah, we can make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You got it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Excited.
Yeah. Me too, actually. All right. So that was the only person that did sign up on the, the open forum piece. Is there anybody in the audience that happens to be here that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's, on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the open forum. And I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede.
Yep, that's fine.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So this evening, we have presentations. We actually have two this evening. The first one is going to be our official appointment of our newest council member that the council, the council has chosen, which is Monique Garza. And so what I'm going to do is ask Monique to join me down in front and her family to come on up front. And we're going to administer the oath of office. Council, you could come now. We'll go right in the middle here. All right. So if you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I am Monique Garza.
I'm Monique Garza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the Office of Councilmember.
The duties of the Office of Councilmember.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
County of Washington.
County of Washington.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to law and to the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law and to the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
There you go. You want a picture? Come on up. And then we have to make it official. Tammy. Tammy. This is locked up. All right. Well, that's awesome. And welcome, welcome aboard. We're excited to have you join the team. So-
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. So our next one this evening, it's kind of, I'll say it's a sad day, but it's also an exciting day. Look at he's laughing in the front row here. And his, his wife and family are going, oh, thank goodness. But, but this is the recognition of our deputy Director of Public Safety, our Fire Chief. You have kind of that dual role title there. His retirement. So we have him been with the, with the city for quite a long time. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But our actual Director of Public Safety, it looks like they're doing some technical moves there, is going to kind of kick us off. And then I would ask Council, once again, to join me down in front with, with Rick and to celebrate this milestone in your life and the city of Cottage Grove. So Pete, take it away.
Sure. In a moment, we'll have, because Rick loves the limelight. He loves standing up in front. And so I do appreciate the, the time tonight. And I need to let you know that Rick is not done until the end of the month. But as a guy that has a wife that has a December birthday, I know we have to kind of keep it away from the holidays. So I didn't want to do this right before Christmas and everything and take away from Rick's night. So this is just kind of the start of some different things. He has a retirement party coming up and everything. But I do want to recognize Chief Redinus tonight on his upcoming retirement. Rick has served public safety since October 27th of 1987. So, and he served 34 years. I know the math doesn't add up. He took a two-year hiatus when he moved over to Eagan, when him and his wife were over there. And then quickly, he knew he needed to come back to this side of the river. So 34 years. But at the end of the year, he is retiring. And it is really a challenge for me to try to summarize 34 years in someone's public safety career, especially when you find out that Rick had two paths. He also had the police side and the fire side. So I'll try to do it justice. But as I said, Rick is a modest man. The longer I talk, the more uncomfortable he's going to get. But Rick has really been instrumental in providing the highest quality-based fire and EMS services. He's always held himself to the highest standards, and that's always come back to the troops. We've always known his expectations are high, whether it's whatever service or making sure a vehicle is clean. But I mean, that, that's Rick. So he's always been a doer. And if he didn't, he wouldn't tell someone to do something that he wouldn't do. So but since 1987, Rick's done a lot of changes. I joined the department in 92, and I've seen those changes. And whether it was Rick as a part-time firefighter, a part, when he was a captain, he's kind of been a part of a lot of these changes, but he'll never take credit for it. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the, just kind of going through. Rick was the chief as we transitioned from a police officer paramedic program to a fires paramedic program. That was a huge undertaking, going from just one or two full-time to now a group of 15. So that was, that was a huge change. I don't even know how to explain our duty crew model and all the changes, you know, and what shifts they work. And, you know, going from 12s to 24s for some, too. That was a huge accomplishment. Rick loves when we talk about the COVID response and everything. And I think we all got tired of talking about it. Rick was a part of that with the emergency management team. The, the changes we've had in the fire halls with our delivery, you know, that beautiful central fire station, Rick was a big part of that. And anytime I bring up, like, we should have done this, he's like, I asked for that. So he's very, he's very passionate about that. So keep that in mind. But and then just a lot of the leadership things he did with, I mean, you see our aerial platform truck. Rick trusted a truck committee to come in and beg for the money and do all the planning. But, you know, Rick knows trucks, Rick knows, you know, all the apparatus and everything. So those, I mean, how, how do you summarize that in 34 years? You really can't. So but as you know, Rick has public safety in his blood. For those that, if you don't know this, but Rick started his law enforcement career in 1993 with Silver Lake. Then he went to Eagan from 94 to 99. And again, Rick was, he's a townie. He grew up in Cottage Grove. He wanted to come back here. So he worked in St. Paul Park as a police officer until 2012. And then obviously, when he got hired here full-time as the Fire Chief, he left. But he didn't leave law enforcement. He, for how many years? Five, six years? He was with Washington County Sheriff's Department with the Water Patrol. And he still can't give it up. And he still goes out and works as a police officer at, at the state fair. So really, you know, Rick is what we need in this community. He's committed. Rick's family has been committed. Chris was a longtime member of our Fire Auxiliary. Now she's a member of the Public Safety Board. And I honestly thought Rick would be up here saying words about me when I retired and Rick would still be here. But then that little guy right there showed up, the guy that's clapping there. So Rick's perspective really changed in life. Well, Chris retired from her job. And I think he was a little jealous seeing her fun thing. And then the grandchild. But Rick's always been a part of the family. And I have to mention, like, Ashley grew up in the firehouse. She had a lot of other uncles and aunts. And I'm sorry, I hope we raised you right. But as a little kid, I mean, you've always been around too, Ashley. So I know both you and Chris, you're very proud of, of Rick. So I don't really have much more other than Rick really did, when, when he started, his whole goal is never accolade. He just said, I want to leave this place a better place when I'm gone. And Rick is doing that. So and we say gone, it's not going to be gone. We already have him committed to the holiday train committee next year. Chris is going to get him at the food shelf. But without, I mean, Rick, you're leaving this place much better. And, and we'll really roast the heck out of you at your retirement party. But for now, I'd like you to come up front. The mayor and the council have a recognition plaque, too.
Well, what, what can we say? So, you know, it's amazing when you think 30-plus years in a position. And, you know, people don't stay in jobs that they don't like, right? People stay in jobs that touch your, touch your heart and affect families and that. And all the years that you've been, and many of these years, I've known you too, and the family. The fact of the matter is, you really truly care about this community. And you will be absolutely missed. I can see we've got a lot of current and former firefighters and such in the room here this evening. And that's, I think, a testament to you. They're here to support you. And I know you don't like all this limelight. But the, but the, but the fact is, you have created an impression, a real positive one within the community, both for the firefighters and, and the people in this room, but also for the numerous people, to be honest with you, saved. You and the firefighters and the fire department, or the police department and such. If you think about all the incidents and things over the many years that we've had in Cottage Grove, you have been a part of saving lives. And so this is really a good thing for you from a retirement standpoint, right? You get to go spend some time away. But also, at the same time, we want to make sure that we send you, at least with a small little gift. And I'll read it here in a second. But I just want to say on behalf of myself, I know the council, all of our staff, and all the citizens of Cottage Grove. And I can actually say, even outside Cottage Grove, because I was the mutual aide, there's many a times where you went to other communities, put aside all the different jobs that you had in other communities, to help those communities with events and crises that happen there. So now I'm going to read the plaque. It says, Rick Redinus, Deputy Director of Public Safety, Fire Chief, City of Cottage Grove, Department of Public Safety, Fire and Emergency Medical Services Division, served 1987 to 2023. In recognition of your dedicated service to the Cottage Grove Public Safety Department and the citizens in which we serve, Fire Chief Redinus has been instrumental in providing the highest quality-based fire and EMS services, and has led the fire EMS department in a positive direction. From your start as a firefighter to retirement as Fire Chief, Rick Redinus has had a direct impact on the excellent reputation and high standards of this department. Rick Redinus served in the department and citizens, Rick Redinus's service to the department and the citizens is greatly appreciated. The professionalism and integrity of the department is a direct result of Rick's commitment to the community and the organization. So once again, on behalf of all of us, and I'm going to turn the mic over to you, let's give him a round of applause, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Very not needed. This is something that, for me, I wanted to do since I was six years old, police and fire. And I got the chance to do it. I, it's going to be tough. I got a very caring family that put up with this for that long. So I'm very happy for that. My family and fire and then the city, very, very helpful, very appreciative for all they, they've done, not only for me, but for the department. We all work well together. And I, I thank you for this. Again, definitely not needed. Like Director Kerner said, I am a townie, like he is. And this is something that we just strive to do. And we don't do it for accolades. We just do it because it needs to get done. So I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor, may we get all the firefighters that are here?
Yes.
Let's go.
Speaks, stand up. You knew that was coming.
Natural born leader.
Maybe is that working?
Done enough?
Everybody can see me? One, two, three.
He wants us to stay down for, for, for his first call.
Yeah, they're doing the HeartSafe. All right. You want to do the next one?
I'll just do a real quick. Yeah, we, we did it with that HeartSafe community. We did it way quicker than we ever imagined. So Deputy Chief John Pritchard is going to give a quick overview of the HeartSafe Community Initiative and what we did. And it's not over. We still have some goals and we'll keep working. So I'll turn it over to DC Pritchard.
Thank you, Director Kerner. And again, this is another, just a list of Rick's accomplishments under his tenure in our department. And I think it's fitting for all of his commitment to our community. To highlight somebody else that really loves attention, I'd like Emily and Craig Dowdell to come join us up here as we talk about this. So the Dowdell family is, created Teddy's Heart. And really, Teddy's Heart really gave the soul to this HeartSafe City Initiative. We started the HeartSafe City Initiative in February 2022 and unfortunately lost Teddy in May of 2022. But it really, again, gave the soul and the motivation to move this forward in that record pace. It really is because of the Dowdell family. So they're very well deserved to join in this recognition. So go through here real quick. We did do our, we joined dozens of other communities throughout the state of Minnesota to receive a designation for our HeartSafe City community, excuse me. It really recognized efforts to prepare our community to better respond to those that might have a sudden cardiac arrest, where their heart stops and they require immediate care. The Minnesota Department of Health with the American Heart Association is who offers this designation. And in order to get this designation, you get heartbeats points to get that designation through an application. And points or heartbeats are awarded by increasing community and public awareness, placing AEDs wherever people live, work, and play. And thanks to the Dowdell family, we have these in our public parks. And then more recently, with the help of the Dowdell family, getting them placed through the Cottage Grove Athletic Association. So now we're up to, what, nine, 10 parks where we'll have AEDs in there?
Yeah, pretty quick.
So, and then just really a big part of the thing here is to administer, or teach people how to do CPR in case they were ever to encounter someone with cardiac arrest. And thanks to the team here that's joining us, Chelsea Flores, Nick Aragoni, and James Olson, who are over here that also love attention. But they did a ton of work with this. And just all the other people on the fire department that's helped teach people CPR. And that included over 2,000 people in our community to learn CPR in just a year and a half. And it really is just amazing what our department did, along with our city and community, to get to this point. And really, I can genuinely say, it is a safer place to experience this life-altering event if someone were to have this in Cottage Grove. We're not done yet, though. Our goal is to train over 4,000 people. So we're still going to continue to offer CPR, still get AEDs everywhere the public is, and continue to do classes and everything like that. Like you can see, some highlights, Van Meter had us out to do training for them, one of our largest businesses in Cottage Grove. The Cottage Grove Lions hosted a class for us and just dozens of community groups that deserve so much thanks and businesses that have had us out. We even did one Garden World today. We did over 25 people in CPR. So just amazing outpouring of support. So that's all I have. But again, just really want to highlight the Dowdell family and getting, but Teddy's Heart really, again, is the soul of this. And I cannot thank them enough because it, I, I wish we would have never met. And I mean that in all the way possible. But this truly is, again, it gave the name and the face to this, is Teddy Dowell, who died at the age of 22 from sudden cardiac arrest. And we do all this so we never have to meet another family like the Dowdells again. So.
Well said.
Okay. So.
Maybe I'll just, I just want to add into that. I remember when we met, I guess, at the Woodridge Park for kind of the installation, if you will, of the first AED. And, you know, I'm one of these individuals that always believes there's a purpose to everything, even though some of those things that happen are tragic. But there's something really amazing that came out of that tragedy. And frankly, that's the two of you with your, your son, right? And all the, all the work to get these AEDs into our community, getting us to the designation, having all of our firefighters here participate to help make sure that what did unfortunately happen to your son won't happen in the future. And as weird as this may sound, at some point in time-
a catalyst to help us achieve this designation. This is something we've talked about for a long time in the city of Cottage Grove, and as Deputy Chief Pritchard mentioned, the effort that you have put forward and your ability to connect various groups, whether it be your Lions Clubs, or your athletic associations, or the various public safety teams in different communities, in order to ensure that the tragedy that you experienced isn't ever experienced again in our community is really powerful stuff. I also wanted to just take a moment to thank the Cottage Grove Fire Department, because this isn't just a Teddy's Heart, or Deputy Chief Pritchard, or Chief Redinas initiative, this is the entire fire department, and I've seen our folks out at so many different events, whether it be the Fourth of July event, or the installation event at Woodridge Park, Strawberry Fest this year, and so many others, I was lucky enough, when our Lions Club came into the fire station to be part of that. The entire team is really behind this, and I think that's why we achieved the goal so quickly, because it isn't just one, two, three people trying to lift this. This is, this is a, it's a community lift, and our fire department is the tip of that spear, because they're the ones who have that knowledge and experience to teach quick CPR and some basic lifesaving skills, et cetera. So I think they deserve a great deal of credit for really getting behind this, being committed, and helping us achieve this in partnership, of course, with all of the other folks we've mentioned already. So, thanks again, you guys, this is a, this is a really prestigious honor, and it's pretty neat that it happened this quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and also thank you to our council who supported this, and it was part of a council meeting in February 2022 to get us on this journey. We did get something cool done, and I'd like to invite the council for a picture, just because you've supported us so well, but we'll end up putting these on signs in Cottage Grove, but this is our ceremonial Heart Safe City signs.
Oh, my goodness, what a good start to the evening. All right, next then, we're done with presentations this evening, now we're moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything council would like to pull on tonight's consent? Councilmember Olson?
I would like to pull item I, please.
Item I, and not to freak out staff, but I'm going to pull J just for a comment from myself. Anything else? All right, so I'll start with, with Councilmember Olson, this is the lease agreement with the Southeast Metro Amateur Radio Club.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. For the folks watching at home, item I on our consent calendar tonight is an item requesting that we approve the lease agreements with C-Mark, which is the Southeast Metro Amateur Radio Club, that will govern their use of pre-existing equipment on or at the Westra Water Tower, the Highlands Water Tower, and Cottage Grove Fire Station Number Three. We're lucky enough to have a representative from C-Mark in the audience, my friend David Bloom is here, and I asked Dave a couple of questions before the council meeting started, just to make sure that I have all my facts straight, but really what we're doing here is we are renewing lease agreements for what's called a repeater that goes on the various water towers, and what that repeater does is it actually helps disseminate the signal from the amateur radio club, you know, I'm going to call it ham radio, although it's not that, but that's what most people recognizes as the name, so that when they are, you know, in a position where they need to communicate with other folks, they have the wherewithal to do so, even if the storm's in the area, or there's a tragic event or something like that knocks out regular communications. The Southeast Metro Amateur Radio Club is actually a partner with our public safety team, both in the city and in Washington County, and they're sort of the last line of defense as it relates to communication. So what they do is they have two events each year, one in the summer, one in the winter time, where they actually do training to make sure that, you know, everything's operating correctly from an equipment perspective, and that their signal is reaching all of the various areas that it may need to reach should we have an issue with communication where our regular radios and those kinds of things are no longer functioning properly. And when they have this training, they actually try to reach various points in North America, whether it be in, you know, Canada, you know, the southern United States, all over the place, and in fact, I've been there during some of the training where they've been able to communicate overseas, whether it be with Europe, or Australia, or things of that nature, because they have such a powerful ability to disseminate that signal, and they use all kinds of tricks with clouds and weather and things that I don't even know anything about, but I just know that when I'm there, it's pretty fascinating. They have their winter training day coming up here on January the 27th and 28th, and that will be at Fire Station Number Three, which is where they are housed out in Old Cottage Grove, and I know that they like to have curious people who are interested in what they do stop by and get an opportunity to ask some questions, see how the equipment works, et cetera. So I just wanted to make council aware and make the public at home aware that that training day will take place January 27 and 28, and these folks are very unsung heroes, I guess, but, you know, they are vital, whether it be a nuclear event at Pearl Island, or whatever the case might be, in terms of our ability to continue to communicate effectively should the worst happen, and that's what they train for. So I want to thank David Bloom for being here from C-Mark, and I would request that my council colleagues approve item I as part of our consent calendar. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your guys' service in the community. Item J, just for the public is aware, which is pretty cool, it is a Minnesota Historic and Cultural Heritage Grant, which we're requesting, and I believe we've been approved for, I believe, for 10,000? Or is it, we're just asking for it?
Mayor, members of the council, this is our authorization to submit for the grant.
Okay, and either way, so, but the purpose of this, I just wanted to mention, is to create some interpretive signs for different locations of historical significance around the city Cottage Grove. The one thing I thought was kind of interesting, I just wanted to throw out there for the, for staff, is, and I don't know if this eventually would be kind of fitting into that opportunity for the future, but I know we have a desire at some point in time with historical preservation, historic preservation, to do something with interpretive signs, maybe artwork, if you will, for the military trail or military road, and I know we've seen some designs of maybe of some of that stuff, so I'm just posing it out there as a thought process that there might be that opportunity for us, whether it's through a grant like this, once we kind of get going on the, that historic trail that used to be the connection from Military Road to Fort Schnelling through Cottage Grove. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as a comment, but very excited, and obviously I would assume the council's going to be happy with moving forward on this grant proposal. All right, so that was it for items that were on consent that were polled for discussion. If there's no other comments, I will look for a motion to approve consent.
Move to approve consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thibie, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada, any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So if you are here for anything on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Next on our agenda is eight, which is approved disbursements, which means eight A is pay the bills.
I move to approve disbursements.
All right, sounds good, we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The next item is a public hearing, which we do have one this evening, this public hearing is Lake Flora, second edition, final plat, regional pond purchase agreement, temporary drainage easement, and compost site agreement, and Emily Schmitz is going to take us through this from community development, so, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, that was a mouthful, there's a lot of items that are kind of encompassed in this item this evening, so I'm going to walk through them to hopefully kind of make all those pieces come together. So this particular area is located just north of 100th Street and east of Jamaica Avenue, it's about 69 acres, as you can see before you, a lot of you are familiar with the area as we look at this, so there are several actions again this evening, as I mentioned, and this is a unique project in our business park that we'll talk about the details of. Oh, I'm going to go back just a second, because I want to touch on the history, I made note to talk through this. So historically, the city's EDA has worked with the property owner and coordinated a lot of the sales of properties within the business park, so the WAG farms, as you've heard a lot over the past, but the majority of the area of the business park to the west has been a part of those processes and coordination with the property owner and the city's EDA as we work with those folks to broker the deals for the end users of these properties. Renewal by Anderson, Hohenstein was the most recent that we worked through at the corner of Jamaica and 95th. This particular area will be just the same as we work with the property owner to plat the property and, and create some developable parcels. So before we can plat the property, there are quite a few, what we call the staff and paper easements throughout the plat area, as well as adjacent to this, so a lot of times those paper easements kind of come over time when we need them to cover areas that we need access to, whether it's for drainage, sometimes it's right-of-way, so a lot of hatched lines on this image before you, but this was the best way to encompass all of those paper easements that we've dug up as we try to clean up the platted area. So now that we're plating this particular area, those paper easements are no longer needed specifically for the right-of-ways adjacent to Jamaica, 95th, and 100th Street. So ultimately, that's the public hearing this evening, is to vacate those easements. So I'll talk through the final plat, because a couple of different things happening here. So, one thing, the city is purchasing three of the outlots that we're plating, or excuse me, four of the outlots that we're plating on this entire final plat, you can see I outlined in yellow to kind of give a visual representation. On my next slide, I'm going to talk more in detail about why we're purchasing those outlots, but then it's also important to note, we're creating several developable parcels as a part of this plat as well. Most of you, council, are aware, we do have a purchase agreement with QuickTrip, that is on Lot One, Block Two, so creating that shovel-ready site ultimately for QuickTrip as we work through that, and then Block Two, Lot One, also creating a development-ready site, Ryan Companies does still have that purchase agreement out there, so of course, we're hopeful that they find an end user to move forward. And then you see, technically, it's the north of the site, but this image is sitting the wrong way, but another potentially developable site at such time a user is interested. And then finally, I mentioned briefly, we were vacating some of those paper easements, because as a part of this plat, we are establishing and plating the appropriate right-of-way adjacent to Jamaica Avenue and 100th Street. So I mentioned I'd talk a little bit more in detail about the pond, Langdon Pond Three, my engineer friends have burned that into my mind, but the purpose of, of purchasing those, those additional outlots is to be able to expand that. So, so we have a SWIP, I have to say, I have to read it, but it's Surface Water Management Plan. This particular area is important because it catches a very large amount of water throughout the community and, and stores it, it's an area for flood storage at such time, you know, we have large rain events, and of course, I shouldn't be talking more about that that I don't know, but it also helps as, as the water flows down to the Mississippi River. So, with that being said, as a part of that plan, and as a part of being involved in these wonderfully unique opportunities within our city's business park, and coordinating with our EDA and the property owners, we're able to acquire the additional acres that we need to expand that pond to meet the goals of that surface water management plan. So we'll purchase those, and then it's also important to note, as a part of this land purchase, there is a need for some material to be moved out of those outlots as well, to make it a pond, to hold, to hold that water winter if necessary, so there is that additional material, so we'll continue to work. You heard me mention QuickTrip purchase agreement, Ryan Companies, some of those sites do need some additional material to help them be buildable and developable, so we'll certainly work with those folks as those projects continue to move along. We don't need the material, and they do, so it's a wonderful, wonderful partnership there. And the final component of this entire project is the compost site. Most folks, how can you not be aware of the compost site down there on Jamaica, just across from the old fire station, which lies right on the site that QuickTrip has a purchase agreement on, and so we needed to find them a new home, and in the process, shifting those folks just to the east ultimately, onto the outlet that the city will own, was our best solution at this time, so ensuring that their activities could continue, and so that agreement then will be with the city and Rumpka Companies to allow them to continue to operate and take all of our yard waste, leaves, branches, everything imaginable, so we'll continue moving forward there. So with that said, quite a few recommendations before you this evening, if there are any questions on any of these items, I'm more than happy to provide some details.
Fantastic, thanks, thank you, Emily. So just as a comment for the public, so this is almost the, the last of the parcels, per se, that are going to be, that we're working with, with the Glenn Denning Company, am I correct, I'm looking at?
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, this plat encompasses the final parcels that we have that agreement with the WAG Trust, and then it also does clean up and provide for the WAG Dog Park, which we have a lease until December 31st of 2026, so all of this puts a lot of things into motion, and really creates a lot of win-win situations for everyone as part of this.
Well, and, and you actually took kind of the words out of my mouth with regards to win-win, because one of the things that we've heard, and the council is very aware up here, is that this community wants a QuickTrip, and so the opportunity is for QuickTrip to come here, and then when it was announced that QuickTrip was coming and where they were going, then there was a concern about the compost site being removed, and so for the public, we listened and worked with Glenn Denning Companies, as well as Rumpka and everybody involved, and the intent is we're basically moving or shifting, if you will, the compost site a little further, I could say, south and maybe east a little bit, so that's one good thing, so the compost site will continue to operate in close proximity to where it is today. And then the second thing is, and, and council, I'm sure we'll be talking about this in the, in the not-too-distant future, we have a lease agreement with the property that's owned, or that's being used as our dog park, and so, you know, at some point in time, there's probably going to be a necessity for us to look at purchasing that property, or as I was suggesting with our staff, is there might be some grant opportunities to help fund, similar to what would be done with some of our park properties, where we go after some grant funding and such to possibly purchase that versus quote-unquote levying it onto the taxpayer, so I think, like you said, cleaning all this up, creating technically, I guess, three shovel-ready spots, if you think about it, a dedicated spot where the dog park is, and we get to keep the compost site, this truly, in my opinion, is a
that we have that agreement with the WAG Trust. And then it also does clean up and provide for the WAG Dog Park, which we have a lease until December 31st of 2026. So all of this puts a lot of things into motion and really creates a lot of win-win situations for everyone as part of this.
Well, and you actually took kind of the words out of my mouth with regards to win-win because one of the things that we've heard, and the council is very aware up here, is that this community wants a QuickTrip. And so the opportunity is for QuickTrip to come here. And then when it was announced that QuickTrip was coming and where they were going, then there was a concern about the compost site being removed. And so for the public, we listened and worked with Glenn Denning Companies as well as Rumpka and everybody involved, and the intent is we're basically moving or shifting, if you will, the compost site a little further, I could say, south and maybe east a little bit. So that's one good thing. So the compost site will continue to operate in close proximity to where it is today. And then the second thing is, and Council, I'm sure we'll be talking about this in the not-too-distant future, we have a lease agreement with the property that's owned or that's being used as our dog park. And so, you know, at some point in time, there's probably going to be a necessity for us to look at purchasing that property, or as I was suggesting with our staff, is there might be some grant opportunities to help fund, similar to what would be done with some of our park properties, where we go after some grant funding and such to possibly purchase that versus quote-unquote levying it onto the taxpayer. So I think, like you said, cleaning all this up, creating technically, I guess, three shovel-ready spots, if you think about it, a dedicated spot where the dog park is, and we get to keep the compost site. This truly, in my opinion, is a win-win for everybody. So, Council, do you have any questions at this point, or do you want to just move into the public hearing? Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Again, this is the time, if anybody wants to speak on anything that's regarding this particular topic, is welcome to do so.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Bonnie Madder, 6649 in Skip Avenue South Cottage Grove. Thanks. I don't have any problem really with any of this, but I just have some questions. One question would be, how much additional water is coming in or going to be stored or handled in this new pond? Okay? And then my second question is, where exactly does it exit into the Mississippi River? It goes underneath 100, but where does it exit into the Mississippi River? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. I know, Ryan, do you want to take that one? Probably. Thank you, Ryan Burfin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, so from the pond perspective, there is no additional water today going there, but we know we continue to develop, so our surface water management plan looks out many, many years. And we have an agreement with 3M as well, that we need to control that flow under 100th Street that goes onto their property. And this all accomplishes that. It's been in our planning documents for many, many years, decades even, to do this, and this is just the next step of that. So we want to be proactive, and if we have that win-win, like Emily mentioned, to move that dirt, let's do it now so we can do it in a cost-effective manner. So no new water today with this development, but in this plating, right? But it would just be planning for the future. And then the water does go underneath 100th Street right now, and then there's kind of a long wetland natural area that just flows all the way down to the river across 3M property, kind of comes outright by the Met Council Sewer Treatment Plant under the railroad tracks.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ryan. All right, was there any other, anybody else want to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And as the council sees here, we have two through seven that need to be done separately. So I'll maybe start if we're okay with this. I'll start at this end with Councilmember Cambada and kind of work our way down, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to adopt Resolution 2023-156, approving the final plat to be called Lake Flora, second edition.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, number three?
Mayor, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2023-157, approving the termination of purchase agreement with Glenn Denning Farms LP, Joan Glenn Denning Kennedy Family Limited Partnership.
I would second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Cambada. Again, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Number four?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2023-158, approving the purchase agreement with Glenn Denning Farms LP, Joan Glenn Denning Kennedy Family Limited Partnership and WAG Farms Incorporated.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Councilmember Garza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to number five.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to adopt number five, approve the temporary drainage and utility easement over Lot 1, Block 2, Lake Flora, second edition plat.
All right, so we have a motion by? Second that? All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Garza, second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. There is a lot on this one.
Sure.
Six, we'll go back to Mr. Cambada.
I will move to approve the agreement with Rumpka Companies LLC.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And last but not least, number seven?
Mayor, I'll move to approve memorandum of understanding between the city and Glenn Denning Farms LP, Joan Glenn Denning Kennedy Family Limited Partnership and WAG Farms, Inc., for Lot 2, Block 1, and right-of-entry over Outlots A and C.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Last chance, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Emily.
Mayor, I need to bring to your attention that in number one, we did need to have an adoption of resolution regarding the vacation of the easements.
Oh, is that a separate? Okay.
So I will?
You want to do that one?
I will move to adopt Resolution 2023-149 for vacation of easements as outlined on the partial and full vacation exhibit dated November 1st, 2023.
Thank you for catching that. We have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garza. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we're finished. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda this evening is number 10 is a bid award, and we do have one, the Utility and Engineering Building Bid Award. And our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfin, is going to walk us, I believe, through this one. Welcome, Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. So on Tuesday, November 21st, we did take bids on our utility and engineering building. And similar to other building projects in town, kind of like the Glacier Valley Park Building, this is a construction manager-at-risk model. So we have Kraus Anderson under contract to do that effort, and they take all the bids for this project. So there's 22 different divisions, you know, things like roofing, site utilities, mechanical and such. So there was 107 bids in total across those 22 divisions that we did take. The total value of all the low bids was $9,427,817, and that was under our construction manager's bid estimate of 10.2 million. So we were happy to see that, it was about 7% under, which was definitely a good spot to be with the market and such. This did include one bid alternate for the heated sidewalk. You know, quite often, we have put those as an alternate. And it is something that we definitely like to have because it greatly reduces that winter time maintenance and liability with the main entry, the public sidewalk entry, coming from the parking lot into the building. That was just over $44,000. So as we got favorable bids, we did include that in the recommendation tonight for the award. There were 15 contracts from union contractors. Those are assigned to Kraus Anderson. But similar to other buildings, if there are non-union low bidders, the city does have to hold those contracts, and there were seven in this case that the city would hold. From a construction perspective, it all happens really the same. You know, Kraus Anderson does manage the whole project. We don't directly manage those seven contractors. We just have to hold the contracts because they are non-union, and Kraus Anderson is a union contractor. So that's very similar to past projects. I think Glacier Valley probably had four or so non-union contracts. So with that, these are the two recommendations for you tonight, and I'll stand for questions.
All right, Council, any questions on this topic? All right, Councilmember Cambada?
I'm noticing a trend where our bids are coming in lower than our construction manager's estimates. This is in stark contrast to where we were about 18 months ago, where everything was higher than those bids. So that's encouraging. As we move into the upcoming year and additional projects come to bid, is there any way to utilize or take advantage of that trend and, you know, kind of bid early for future jobs? Or are you seeing, you know, is this just kind of like a one-off type of instance?
Councilmember Cambada, so you are right that we have, you know, gotten, I would say, in several cases, good bids this year, bids in good line with our engineers and construction manager estimates. Part of that is just starting to understand this market that we live in. But part of it too is as things start to stabilize, right? You know, a year ago, two years ago, things were coming up so fast, you know, we couldn't anticipate that. In terms of when we bid, there's definitely different times when you do that. For buildings, you quite often bid this time of year, just as we go into the construction season for that type of project, and as they order things like our tip-up panels that takes so long to get. For street and utility projects, those we do generally like to bid, you know, no earlier than February, just because actually the way those contractors operate, a lot are kind of laid off in the winter, and they aren't really doing a lot of that work. They're closing out past-year projects. So we do want to hit earlier in that timeframe, the February, March, not April, May. But there is kind of best times of year to do different types of work.
Thank you. All right, any other comments, Council? I do know Councilmember Wilson mentioned, I saw you in the audience, John McNamara with Kraus Anderson. We've worked with John on many projects over the years, so very confident in their ability and his leadership on making sure this project comes in under budget and on time, so should be good. All right, Council, we have two motions before us. Who would like to take it? Councilmember Cambada?
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2023-154, awarding the contracts for the utilities and engineering building, approving the guaranteed maximum price contract with Kraus Anderson, and assigning certain contracts to Kraus Anderson.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then number two?
I move to adopt the Resolution 2023-163, declaring the official intent of the City of Cottage Grove to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city with respect to the Cottage Grove Utilities Building.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Again, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. You're on your way now. Thank you, John, for coming in.
Thanks, John.
All right, next on our agenda is our regular agenda, and we have three items. We'll start with A, which is a tobacco compliance check violation, in this case with Hy-Vee. And our Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, is going to walk us through this one. Welcome, Pete.
Thank you. All right, I got to come up and present some fun things. I don't like being up here for these compliance check violations. We do strive for 100%, and we've been doing pretty good, so. We'll get through this pretty quick. You're well aware of the procedures, and the memo was pretty detailed, so I won't read these word for word. But on November 7th, 2023, we did conduct compliance checks with all of our businesses holding tobacco licenses, and this time, we did have a failure at Hy-Vee at the gas station at Fast and Fresh. And this is the business's first violation in a 36-month period, and that's our lookback that we have on the fee table for itself. Again, I think you understand the procedures. We do have in your memo like copies of what the ID would look like for the under 21, and I think this picture, again, just shows how easy it is to do that, so. And we also did include in your packet the police report. So November 7th, we did compliance checks. We had two decoys. One was an 18-year-old female, and the other was a 20-year-old female. Again, generally, these are people that want to get involved in law enforcement or something. We're not sending in an 18-year-old that looks like they're 38. I mean, they, when you see them, you're like, oh, they're probably 16, 17, 18. They definitely look what their age is, so. The decoys did, went to the counter, and a transaction was completed. What happened in this one, the decoys asked for Juul, which is the e-cigarette containing nicotine. The employee did not ask their age, but did ask for an identification. It was actually a manager in the store that asked the employee to check both identifications, but the employee still only checked one. The employee looked at the identification, scanned, and told the decoy, "Good to go." The employee did tell officers that he thought the decoy was born in 2022. Obviously, from, if you read the report, the stories kind of changed a little bit as they went. The employee then said that, scanned the identification, showed she was of age. The employee admitted that something popped up on the screen, and he pressed OK. Basically, he overwrote it, so he just clicked and made the transaction. So the employee was instructed then that be getting the citation along with a court date would be sent, and the manager was there. So officers spoke with the manager and explained that the employee failed the tobacco compliance check, and we did send them the letter with everything, so. Tonight, we're asking that you allow the business an opportunity to speak if they're here, and then after that, we have imposed the scheduled penalty for the first violation in a 36-month period of a $300 fine, so.
Okay. Council, any questions for Pete at this point? Is the applicant here or representatives from Hy-Vee?
Yes.
Did you want to speak?
I can.
Okay, do you want to just come on up and just state your name and address for the record? And your dress can be the store.
Hello, my name is Matthew. Again, the address is 7280 East Point Douglas Road South. The employee in question, he made a mistake by scanning the ID before he scanned the product, which it didn't prompt him to, or it didn't tell him that there was a problem. And since it didn't do that after he scanned the product, he mistakenly just entered in a random birthdate. In response to this, we did recommend him, and we did institute a retraining of all the employees out there, so they understand that they have to scan that ID after they scan the product, so that they're told whether or not that they are underage or not.
Okay. All right, so you've already went through or implemented a training, retraining of the employees enough?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions for Mr. Johnson? All right, thank? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilmember Thede.
I would assume that the, well, obviously, the product that scans the ID, that there was, was there some things already scanned? I wouldn't think that it would, you know, if there wasn't anything scanned as, you know, products, that it would bring up some sort of notification that there was no products in the basket or something when you scanned the ID.
Something similar happened. I actually have that here, if anyone would be interested. We went to our ID department, IT department, to get the keystrokes of what actually had happened, and it did give him an error, but not that anyone was underage. And he simply just didn't understand what the error meant. So that's what wound up happening.
Okay, all right.
All right. All right, I think that was it, unless you have anything else you wanted to share?
I don't.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in tonight.
All right, thank you.
So Council, as you can see before you, this is their first violation. So the, in this particular case, number two would be the penalty, a $300 fine. I would just need a motion and a second by Council to proceed with that recommendation.
Here, I'll move that we proceed with the recommendation to impose the scheduled penalty for the first violation in a 36-month period of time, which is a $300 fine.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Any other discussions? I guess the only other comment I would mention, just in a general sense, is, which I know we're going to have another, now we're going to have alcohol next, we're going to talk about, but, you know, I'll say kudos to all the rest of the businesses in town that passed their tobacco check. Our goal, obviously, as you know, we've talked about this a lot, is, you know, to continue to educate and support our businesses and just making sure that we're following the processes with both tobacco and alcohol, so. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then the next one is a liquor compliance check violation for Walmart, and Director of Public Safety, Pete Kerner, is going to take us through this one, too.
All right. Procedures, everything very similar to what we do with tobacco, so I won't read all of them, but this violation occurred November 6th at the Cottage Grove Walmart, 9300 East Point Douglas, and this is the business's first violation in the lookback of a 24-month period. So the one in question, the police report was obviously including your packet for the record. This compliance check was conducted on November 6th at 5:08 PM. Officers Mulvahill and Officer Foster conducted the compliance checks. In this case, we had two decoys, an 18-year-old male and a 20-year-old female. They went into the liquor store, and the male went right back, grabbed a six-pack of Cayman Jack, brought it to the counter. The employee did not ask for age or identification and completed the sale. The clerk did admit that he did not ask for, when the officers went in, he did not ask for age or ask for identification. Clerk was then told, obviously, they receive a citation with a pending court date. The store manager was also advised of the compliance failure. And if you read the report, there's even more detail where the employee said, "They sure seem like they knew what they were doing or looked like drinkers." they were doing or looked like drinkers." They walked back, grabbed it, came up, so there was really nothing questioned on that, so. And obviously, I just like to always point out, this could be a gross misdemeanor charge under state statute. Our department has always, for the last 20 years, we've looked at it as more educational, and we do the citation for the misdemeanor violation under our city code, and as you know, most of the business ends up having sanctions on their employees, and so there's other things that go with that, so. So, we would allow an employee from Walmart to speak tonight, and I just want to point out, when this recommendation towards them with the penalties, it's, they always seem to be a little more confusing, but remember with alcohol, we do have that extra part where they can do the educational part in lieu of part, or they can, you know, you can recommend both, so. I know a couple of years ago, we talked about this, so I use the same motion that you guys came up with a couple of years ago, so we stay consistent with that, so.
All right, sounds good. Counsel, questions for Pete? All right, is somebody here from Walmart?
Yes.
Did you want to go speak? And again, just your name and the store address is fine for the record.
Good evening. Sylvia Martins, I'm the store manager of the Walmart Cottage Grove, 9300 East Point Douglas. I think everything that was said is correct. We're not contestating anything of that. That's correct. The associate had the technology in front of him to make the proper decision. He was fully trained, and just like it was explained, he made the decision of not following the protocol, so that associate no longer works for me and my store. We take this absolutely seriously, and we retrained all the associates immediately, even though everybody was certified and trained to be able to handle that. I think that a refresher was very important to go through, so every single one of them, we have them go through and sign that they understood all the expectations, which are very simple, right? It's just follow the prompts and check for the ID, and everything else is accurate.
I just have a general question. Is there a process out there, and I don't know if it's with Walmart or anywhere, where before you could sell something, you have to scan an ID?
No. It's my understanding, in a few businesses or certain areas of the country, never before is, as you purchase, it requires you to scan, but I've never heard of you having...
I just was curious. I didn't know if there was.
Not in my business, at least, no.
And then, I did notice that you had held up a sheet that you obviously are going back through and redoing.
Absolutely. Every associate was trained, and...
Do you do it on a periodic basis, then? Is it ever...
Yeah, we have mandatory trainings for all the associates on a quarterly basis, and we just started a new quarter, just, you know, a few weeks ago, but on top of that, we just went over again, since that associate was trained and still committed that violation.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions for the, for Walmart here? Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, for counsel, as you may recall, I know councilmember Garza's new to this. I don't know if councilmember Kamada was here before, so what our Director of Public Safety is mentioning is, there is the ability to waive the one-day suspension in lieu of the Employees' Participation Education Program provided by Public Safety. The fine would still be the fine of $500, and obviously, the associate or former associate, I guess now, still has the misdemeanor...
Yep.
...that they have to deal with, so whatever counsel would like to do with this is welcome to make a motion.
So, I got a question.
Yes, councilmember Thede.
So, the one-day suspension is just for the liquor store part of it? It's not all of Walmart?
Correct.
No, it'd be liquor.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, councilmember Kamada?
Yeah, so, given that there's not been another violation within the last 24-month period, I would be in favor of waiving the one-day suspension. However, tying it to the condition that the employee who's no longer employed with the company get training, and it sounds like they have a robust process in place, and I know that the human factor is always going to be the human factor, you know, is there a lot of value from the city's standpoint of adding or requiring that additional educational component? And I guess that's a question for Pete, like, obviously, he's the one who's dealing directly with the businesses, so, you know, if we go that route, is it going to have the desired effect, which is, you know, hopefully, setting them up for success so that they don't have a failure next time? So, you know, I'm in favor of that as long as it's going to achieve the outcome, which is, you know, that they're going to not continue to, whether intentionally or not, so, it's all the miners.
Yeah, councilmember Kamada, and obviously, Pete can, Kerner can speak to this, too. Not then against, obviously, the manager doing his training that he's doing, but I think on top of it, I think it would be best to have another layer, if you will, because then we know that the training has been done, you know, through our processes. So, that was the only reason, I think, that we, when we talked about this in the past, because a lot of times, as he just mentioned, and we just heard from the representatives from Hy-Vee, everybody goes through this training, but the fact of the matter is, unfortunately, some employees skip steps or don't do what they're supposed to do, and I just think the more that you can put that message out there, and then we know, you know, heaven forbid, that there would be another issue in the future, that we actually also went in and did the training at that time. So, that's personally for me, and I think that was part of what the counsel had discussed a couple of years back, as, you know, why we wanted to do that in lieu of, if necessary or could, of any day of suspension, so. Councilmember Olson?
Director Kerner, I'm going to ask you this question, but I don't know if you're going to be able to answer it, because you have people who do some of this stuff. Walmart was before us, you know, within the last few years.
November 22, 2019.
Okay. So, we're looking at, it's 2023, so in a four-year period of time, they've had two violations, in essence, right? In your view, as the Director of Public Safety, do you feel as though their educational program, their training, et cetera, is adequate? Because I know that we have several other establishments in the city that I don't ever recall seeing them in front of us. They pass every single time.
Yeah. Well, I can speak for, I think there's great value in any kind of educational program. Obviously, Washington County Public Health, they put on a class that gets sent out when we redo their license renewals and everything. I've never worked in retail. I can only imagine the larger companies trying to train people, and I think we have more success with some of the smaller businesses that when we provide, because it's for employees, and they'll come in and open up an hour early, but a place such as Walmart, I know that's not feasible, so I am a fan of the different programs. We've looked at a whole bunch of them, and, you know, whether it's the one that Walmart's used, and some of our other larger, you know, we, it's the same that we provide to them. The nice thing with those, it provides us tracking, you know, we've had a couple of our restaurants with 20 employees, and it's the signup sheet, you know, going through it, at least when some of these larger companies pay these others, but, you know, I think the important thing is to make sure that they have a policy in place that it's when they onboard them, and then, you know, reoccurring, and, you know, and it's just really frustrating for Public Safety when they have point-of-sale systems set up, they have, and they still fail, so, you know, I think that's why we still write the citation, because that employee still faces their consequences, so hopefully answer that, that these different programs are good, and it's just, you know, it's the culture of the work, too, that they keep stressing, even though they do it when they start, make sure that's a culture of the business, too.
Well, the second part of that conversation is, what's going to have the most effective impact relative to future behavior? Because really, that's the purpose behind the citation, it's the purpose behind the ordinance, is we want to change behavior, and I know that, you know, retraining is a really powerful tool, but I also think suspending somebody's license for a day is a really powerful tool. It certainly sends a message. I'm curious if our attorney has any thoughts on, you know, in terms of whatever decision we make tonight, how that applies to potentially future issues of this nature, and us being consistent in the way that we, you know, deliver a verdict, so to speak, when something like this occurs.
Your honor, members of the council, obviously, every fact pattern is different, so we can always find reasons why you think it's important to impose certain conditions or not others. When there has been a prior violation, but there has been a few years, this is obviously a very large part of their business. They have a lot of volume, not to say any other liquor stores don't, but it is a pretty large store.
Uh huh.
I think, do you have to take that into account when you look at the overall picture of how many violations they've had in, there are compliance checks twice a year, I believe?
Yep.
So, in this case, I think there, you know, you can take that into account, that they have passed all of the other compliance checks, that they do have a very large volume and a very large customer base, that this is the second violation in four years, may or may not be significant, but it is certainly a factor that you can take into account.
Thank you.
That probably isn't, not a great, it's kind of a wishy-washy answer, but you need to weigh it all.
It does help in terms of recognizing that different businesses have different business patterns, they have different levels of volume as a retail person, as is the mayor. We certainly recognize that there are times when you train, 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 and train again, and, you know, all it takes is five minutes in somebody's bad day to have a problem, so no, that was very helpful. If they're, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Or councilmember Thede.
Because I would just say that I do believe that technology is available, especially in the liquor store, you know, that, and with, we all know that it's been hard to get employees, and some of the employees that you get maybe aren't as reliable as you'd like to actually put some of that technology in, where possibly in the liquor store that it wouldn't even ring up the sale unless, you know, an ID was scanned or something like that, you know, to really take a look at, how do you really foolproof that process? And so, I would just kind of make that comment, that as a, possibly a manager in a large store like that, that, you know, maybe the justification is there to maybe look further into that.
Okay. Right, counsel, you have a choice, and we'll need a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'll move that we take the path forward here of using the training opportunity as the approach to help our friends at Walmart improve their performance with this in lieu of the $500 fine and one-day suspension, and of course, that training would be a training that is approved by Public Safety Director Kerner.
I want to just ask you for a correction. I believe that the $500 fine still would hold, but the one-day suspension would not in lieu of training.
The way that the recommendation reads is, in lieu of the suspension and fine, the participation of employees in an educational program approved by the Public Safety Director within 90 days. So, if the document here that I'm looking at is inaccurate, I would absolutely amend my motion to say that we would impose the $500 fine, and then, in lieu of suspension, the employees would participate in a training program.
All right, so you're amending your motion?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. It looks like on the packet I...
Yeah, I saw that. It's right on the board.
I have the correct one on the screen, so I apologize.
Yeah, the right ones on there, okay.
I would second that.
All right, so we have a motion by councilmember Olson, second by councilmember Kamada. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and then, last, under our regular agenda item, is Brenda Melanowski is here to do what we've been doing for many, 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 many months, and that is the property tax levy payable in 2024 and adoption of the 2024 budget. So, Brenda, welcome.
Thank you. All right. Members of the council, as the mayor alluded to, we've been working on this budget for many months. In fact, we've been working on it since January of this year, so we've got 12 months in this process as of tonight, and so, as you can see, the city council takes it very seriously. Our department leaders, our city administrator, our city staff, all work in collaboration on our budget document, our property tax levy each year. We do many meetings, many workshops to look at the process, and so, on September 6, the levy that is in front of you this evening, you approved it as a preliminary levy. We certified it to Washington County. They use that levy to prepare property tax, proposed property tax notices for all our taxpayers. They mailed those in November. On that notice, they did receive notice that we would be talking about the budget and the levy this evening, and so that's where we are tonight, where we can take some budget comments, and then you're asked to make a consideration on adopting the final levy and budget. Once that is certified, that property tax levy, we'll send it to Washington County. They'll use it to prepare the 2024 tax notices. Our budget for 2024, it accomplishes many things. I won't go through each one, but we are providing the same exceptional level of services that we have in the past to our community, whether that is our police services, fire services, streets, snow plowing services, our parks and recreation services, those same exceptional services, we're able to deliver in 2024 with this budget and levy. We do have stewardship of our capital assets. We're demonstrating that in the budget. We're replacing the capital equipment that needs to be replaced. We evaluate those every year. We are using our capital improvement plan and our financial management plan that we prepared earlier this year through that process. Our city tax rate is what is used on an individual homeowner basis or commercial property basis to determine what they'll pay in city property taxes next year, and there's two components of it. And the first component of determining that city tax rate is our property tax levy. For 2024, it is proposed to be about $23.1 million, an increase of about 11.99%. However, the second part of the equation in determining our city property tax rate is our tax capacity, and because we're a growing community and we're bringing on some new construction for next year, that tax capacity is increasing by about 19.3%. And because of that tax capacity is increasing by a higher percentage than our levy, our city tax rate for 2024 will fall. It'll be at 32.728%. We use that, then, again, on each individual homeowner or business to determine what they'll pay in city property taxes. A little bit about that property tax levy, we're at $23,125,600, and some of the details on that, our Public Safety City Hall loan, there's an increase on that line item, about $50,000. That's actually not only for the loan, but to start doing some maintenance on our buildings that we haven't been levying for in the past, but we need to start that as part of our financial management plan. And then, our EDA levy, we have last increased it back in 2017, and so we need to increase that, so that's there. Our equipment levy, that's been included in our general fund in the past. We're moving it down to another line item for more transparency throughout the budget process. And then we have our debt levy, and the biggest portion of our debt levy is our pavement management program, so redoing our streets and our residential neighborhoods. We both have the 2023 pavement management project that we're adding on to the levy, and then we did do a refinance of some debt back in 2021, and as part of that refinancing, the levy for 2023 was lower, but then there was a scheduled increase in 2024, and so that was anticipated and expected. We're starting to levy for the Glacial Valley Park building that we built this year, and then finally, we're starting to do debt for East Point Douglas Road projects. It's a two-year project. Last year, Jamaica was funded with our MSA funds, and East Point Douglas portion will be funded in portion with debt levy. One of the components back on that last slide was our general fund, and so that does, is included in our property tax levy, and so I'm going to go in a little bit more detail on this slide. Our general fund is $25,152,640 for 2024, and so our general fund, we call it our chief operating budget here for the city of Cottage Grove, and so it funds things such as police services, fire services, snow plowing, parks, recreation, some of those services, and when we provide those services, we typically don't send a bill, so when we go on a fire call, we're not giving a bill to the resident as we respond, but we have to generate revenue somehow, and so we generate that through property taxes. So, on our revenue portion, 74% of our budget are property taxes, taxes. So on our revenue portion, 74% of our budget are property tax taxes that fund those services. And then on the expenditure side, when we provide those services, we're sending the police officer out or the firefighter out. And so it makes sense that 69% of our budget does pay for personal services. We're in the people business. We provide those services through our people. And this is all typical of other communities throughout the country and in Minnesota. A little bit more detail on our general fund revenue. We do have a revenue increase of about 8.96% for 2024. However, the property tax increase is only 5.82%. We've been able to do that because we have identified some other revenue streams in the budget process, namely, we are receiving public safety aid, one-time public safety aid from the state. It's on a per capita basis for all communities in Minnesota. We'll receive about $1.73 million, and we are utilizing it in our next three budget cycles. For 2024, we'll be hiring two police officers, three firefighter paramedics, using it for part-time firefighter wages, and then some IT capital expenses related to public safety. Local government aid, we hadn't received that for the last couple of years. Up at the state legislature, they kind of retweaked the formula a little bit. And so we're getting a slight amount, $54,000 in that. And just to note, our license and permits, they are down budget conservatively here. So we're down about 4.48% in the budget. Just expecting that building activity may stay light for next year. But to offset that, we are keeping one building inspector vacant in the budget for 2024 with the thought that we'll bring that back in 2025. On the expenditure side, we have a balanced budget. And so what that means is we've got revenues that equal our expenditures. We're not taking out of our cash. We're not using our fund balance. We're not using our other reserves. And so it's an expenditure increase of the same amount, 8.96%. It's important to note that our union contracts and bargaining contracts were settled for 2024 at 3%. And so that's what's included in the budget. We've got several new positions. We talked about the public safety position. The other positions that are noted on the screen are not funded by the property taxes, but by other funds in the city, other revenue streams. And then we do have a new weather warning siren that's included in the budget at the 9,500 block of Military. As we worked through the financial management plan earlier in the year, there was a discussion on contingency, a budget contingency for things that could happen throughout the year that we're not anticipating, whether that be a storm event or some other event. And it also helps us maintain our fund balance policy at the end of the year. So we're starting to budget for that with this budget document. Our median home in Cottage Grove, this is on this slide showing the impact of the levy in the budget that's in front of you, what our median home will realize in property taxes for 2024. The median home in Cottage Grove is $363,000. That's set by the county, Washington County Assessors Office. It increased in value by 9.2%. For 2024, at that property tax rate of 32.728%, they would pay $1,173 in property taxes in 2024. It's an annual increase of $71 or 19 cents per day. We also, we don't only look at the median home. We want to look at other properties in the community. So there's other, four other properties that we track, and those are shown on the screen. Those four properties, they increased in value per the Assessors Office between 6.49% or 12.68%. So in that range, those four properties fell. With those four properties and the median home, based on the levy in front of you, the average tax impact on those five properties is $97. Our financial management plan that we did early in the year identified that we needed about $100 a year increase to fund our pavement management program, our streets program, fund our capital needs, our operating needs, those sorts of needs. And so we're within that financial management plan. We also like to compare how we're doing to other communities. And so on this slide, for other cities in Washington County, based on their median home and based on their preliminary levy, as you can see, just like last year, Cottage Grove is the second lowest in Washington County. So we are able to provide exceptional services to our residents at a very low property tax amount. So the only city that is lower than Cottage Grove is St. Paul Park. They do get a significant amount of local government aid, as we know. And so we compare very favorably when we look at other cities. And then finally, we also, last year, started to look at other growing communities in the metro, over 40,000. Just like last year, we are the third lowest when we look at those surrounding communities. We have just Blaine and Shakopee below us. And so we, again, compare very favorably for what we are able to offer to our community. Shakopee does have some significant tax base for commercial and industrial, which pulls them down, and Blaine is very close to where we are at. What do your city taxes pay for? So that median home, if instead of sending their property tax payment to Washington County, if they sent us a check to the city of Cottage Grove on a monthly basis, no different than they send their check or make their payment for their Excel Energy bill or their Comcast bill, their other monthly bills, they would send us $98, $97.76 per month. And we would in turn use $41.27 to fund public safety, so our police and fire services. We would use $13.35 for our streets, our snow plowing services. General government, community development, that really functions, supports all the other divisions in the city, would be $12.83. Parks and recreation, $10.40. Debt service, so those past pavement management programs, the debt that we have on our buildings, so our central fire station, our hero facility, those types is $16.58. And then our capital outlay, so replacing our squads, our plowchucks as they're needed, our fire equipment, $1.35. Our EDA levy, $1.16. And then we have council contingency at $0.82. So a great value here, so about $3.21 per day. One last thing, there are some property tax programs at the state. There is a website link there. There's a phone number on those programs. I've worked with a couple residents this year on those programs, so they can absolutely call City Hall. I can walk them through them. They are income-based, and so I can help them determine if they're qualified. I'm happy to do that. And always watch for your valuation notices. Those arrive from the county in April, March or April. That is the time, if you have a question about what your property is being valued at, to make that, go to those Board of Appeal hearings on those. With that, I have the recommendations on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. And thank you, by the way, for sharing once again that those two reports that kind of show how we sit within the county, but also with cities over 40,000, which we categorize kind of as growing cities out there. It is quite impressive, and I know that's what our council has always been doing. Matter of fact, I know a certain council member to my left here always wants to make sure that we're down in the bottom of that list. And I know we all do too, but he likes to prod us to make sure that that is indeed the case. So council, is there any questions that you have for Brenda at this point? Councilmember Olson?
Brenda, as always, I want to congratulate you and the team for your ability to manage the budget as tightly as you do. As the mayor mentioned, when you look at these two documents about where we stand versus our peers in Washington County and versus our peers in the metro, it's pretty clear that the folks here at City Hall definitely do a very nice job of maintaining the public trust and being very careful with public funds. Something you mentioned that I just wanted to comment on real quickly is, you know, there is a thing in the state of Minnesota called local government aid. And for people who may not know what that means, LGA is a formula that is utilized by the folks up in St. Paul in the state legislature to help support communities that may have a variety of different components as part of their community culture. One may be aging infrastructure. One may be, you know, their tax capacity versus their size, so on and so forth. And within that formula, the legislature looks at, you know, who really should be eligible for local government aid, and then who has the ability to sort of manage their budget on their own without any state help. And as you mentioned, for the first time in a long time, Cottage Grove got a little bit of LGA. So we're grateful for our friends up at the Capitol for, you know, putting us on the list. It was $54,000, which isn't a lot, but you know what? It's $54,000 more than we got in the past, so we'll certainly take it. But when you compare with some of these other communities, I think it's important to note that many of these communities, in some cases, over half their budget is local government aid. In other words, it comes from the state. And so when they are able to, you know, produce a levy amount that might be a little bit less than what we have, that's generally the reason why. Or as you mentioned with Shakopee, you know, they get a big fiscal disparities budget, those kinds of things. And so for anybody who's interested in actually reading more about or looking into that, you can go to the League of Minnesota Cities website, and they have all sorts of charts and graphs and different things. You know, I like to do that stuff at night sometimes and just look at where we compare to other communities and what some of the moving parts are. And it just says again that we have a really strong, robust, careful planning program when it comes to our budget. And let's not forget that that process led us to a AAA bond rating this year. And that AAA bond rating is going to help us with managing our debt more effectively, et cetera. So kudos all around. Really good job. Love the numbers. Thank you for sharing this with us. And I continue to be just amazed at what great service we provide at such a low cost in the city of Cottage Grove. Back to you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Thede, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, and I guess I'd like to start out with saying that it is fantastic staff. You know, we have a fantastic city to live in. We've got a lot of very good amenities and value. I think one of the very good things in having a financial background and education, the financial management plan and trying to plan that and keep it consistent is good. But I do have a challenge for the city, because as you look at the financial plan, okay, unfortunately, even though we have it at $100, the first two years are above that, okay? And I see it adjusted down a little bit from what we were looking at before. And to get that $100 average over 10 years, the last few years are lower than 100, okay? Which I challenge us to really take a look at that and historically keep it at that average of 100, because it's more than likely, I'm hoping I don't see that the $100 that we start having in 2025 doesn't all of a sudden creep up with lower numbers now than back in, you know, 10 years later in '33 and '34, okay? Because I can see that as being very easily happening, all right? And then if we look then at the 10 years of our financial plan, which we said we were going to be at $100, you know, all of a sudden we see that it's consistently, you know, over that $100, yet we can still say the average going out 10 years was under $100, if you kind of know what I mean. So I've got that challenge out there. I think, you know, you guys, you do, there's a lot of, a lot of different balls to balance and a lot of different things that go on. But let's really dig into this financial management plan and really, really live it and show that we really are working at managing it at $100 a year and looking at some of that historical, so.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Brenda at this point? All right, I think we might have somebody that has a comment or a question. Is, am I correct in the audience or no? Nope, all good? Okay.
Mayor, I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2023-152, adopting the 2023 property tax levy collectible in 2024.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a second one there?
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-153, adopting the 2024 budget.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
So we got a second by Councilmember Garza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And as I think you heard from pretty much everyone on the council, you know, kudos to our staff and continuing to manage the dollars in the city. We take that very seriously. And as I always like to say, we're all up here to taxpayers ourselves. So whatever we do from a city's perspective, obviously affects all of us. And frankly, a lot of the, our staff members that actually live here in the community. All right. So next on our agenda is council comments or requests. I will start at this end with Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking all of our city staff for their hard work and dedication. The city runs as smoothly as it does because of them. Every single person has a part of that. Next, I'd like to preemptively thank all of the volunteers who are going to be helping out with. I mean, we've got just a handful of events in December, so Holiday Train, food drives, other, I mean, there's too much, there's a list, but this isn't the whole list, I'm sure. So yeah, I just, I think as a community, we step up and volunteer and really do kind of help make this community special. So thank you to everyone.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our newest council member, Councilmember Monique Garza. It's really great to have you here with us this evening at the Council Days. I was excited for your swearing in. Clearly, your family was very excited as well. And I have all the confidence in the world that you will be a great addition to the Cottage Grove City Council. The work that you've already done in the community with so many different things, including the movies in the park or movies with Mole, as you like to call it, you know, with the Women in Business Group through the chamber, et cetera. You've definitely demonstrated a lot of care and concern and commitment to the city of Cottage Grove, and that's what this job requires. There's a lot to it, but I know you're up to the challenge, so welcome.
Thank you.
The second thing, mayor, is I just wanted to take a moment and thank the staff for a response to something that I made comment on at a previous council meeting. We had spoken about the Holiday Train, which I know you're going to talk about in your comments. And one of the things that I had asked is if staff would take the time to go and visit with some of the local businesses where we had some parking challenges last year. And it sounds like that's been washed, rinsed, dried, repeat several different times. And all of our business partners in the community are just as excited as we are. They're well-informed. They know that we are going to potentially have some parking in their lots. And I believe there's also been some signage that's been made up down at Public Works. So definitely a phenomenal response. And I think all that's going to do is make the Holiday Train on Sunday that much more special, because people will be able to find places to park, and they'll have the opportunity to get down by the YSB a little early, et cetera. So I'll leave the rest of that up to the mayor, because I know that's a very important event for him. And then third, just a pat on the back to everybody who had a hand in our hometown holiday celebration. I thought this year's event was just marvelous. And driving in to City Hall and seeing all the trees lit up like we did that evening and then again tonight, it really does put you in the spirit of the holiday season. And the food trucks were a wonderful addition. We had an area for people to sit in a heated tent. So many different other things that were here expanded from last year. It was year two, definitely bigger than year one, no questions asked. And then I'm certain that there were some learnings that will apply to year three. But again, pat on the back for all involved. I know it was a heavy lift. There was a lot of folks that did a lot of work to make that event work. There was a lot of folks that did a lot of work to make that event work out well, and it was sure fun, and I think the community really appreciated it. That's it for me, mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bethie?
Well, I think we have to maybe thank Mother Nature too because this year was a lot warmer than last year, which was downright chilly. So.
Let's just say cold.
Otherwise, I'm good.
All right, sounds good. This will be your first time, but Councilmember Garza, anything you want to add?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the community. I'm so looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to working with everyone, so thank you so much.
You got her. All right, and, you know, Councilmember Olson mentioned about the hometown holiday celebration. I do want to thank our staff, all the different departments, obviously, work together to create that neat environment out there. We had record crowds from what we've had in the past. And again, it was a nice evening temperature-wise, but we'll take those when we get those. And then as it was kind of alluded to a little bit earlier, we do have the CPKC, Kansas City, Canadian Pacific.
Pacific, Kansas City.
Yeah, they added that now. But anyway, the Holiday Train, I'll just call it that, is pulling into town here on Sunday, this coming Sunday. The festivities actually start down there by the Youth Service Bureau at 3:00. The train gets in around 5-ish. Obviously, the purpose of this, other than the great celebration and fun that we have in the community and the beautiful train, is to fund, create a fundraising opportunity for our Local Friends in Need Food Shelf. And I will just share with you, I did get an update this morning. So the target that they've been shooting for this year is 100,000. And as of this morning, they're already over, and I say already over before we get to the event on Sunday, over 90,000. So they've already raised over, actually, it's more than 90,000. I just went a little bit lower. But fantastic support within our community, whether it's individuals, businesses. Absolutely encourage everybody to come down. The weather, again, is supposed to be nice on Sunday. We are expecting record crowds once again. We have been once, and I'll say this once again, CPRC, CPKC has mentioned to me that the, they absolutely, their most favorite stop is the Cottage Grove stop because we do more with it than just having them show up and people come down and look at the train, hear the music, and leave. And they're, they literally bring staff members and executives here to Cottage Grove to check it out. And so I just wanted to, you know, say kudos to our community and communities for supporting those in need at this time of year with the Friends in Need Food Shelf. And I know that they're also collecting toys too. We've been doing some of that and to make that happen. The only other item I'll mention, I know Councilmember Kamada was commenting about all these things going on, there is the Holiday Home Lights Tour map, which is available on our city's website, or you can link to it through Facebook, so you can check out what's going on. I would say that we have Breakfast with Santa on Sunday, but it's completely sold out. We just had a great event down at the VFW with the Lions for their Santa breakfast, and that was amazing too. So yes, I do both Santa breakfasts with the grandkids, so you just have to.
We had the biggest crowd we've ever had.
Yeah, it was pretty.
It was really fun.
Pretty impressive. And then I guess just for fun, I will just mention, because those that know me know I'm a huge hockey fan, tomorrow evening, on Thursday evening, at the Cottage Grove Ice Arena, is the Boys Park versus Eastridge hockey game. So it's going to be crazy busy because obviously the two schools. We have a little friendly wager between a particular council member in Woodbury for some donuts on which team wins. So whether it's Eastridge or Cottage Grove, he did have to pay us last year.
Yep.
Because Park did beat him. And I will just share, I've had the opportunity to visit two of the games so far, or attend two of the games. And Park, I don't want to jinx this, but we look like we have a really good team this year, new coach and such. So very impressed with it, looking forward to seeing that tomorrow evening and hopefully at a future council meeting near you, a particular council member from Woodbury will be bringing us some donuts again, hopefully.
Again.
Yes, I said again.
Key word, again, yeah.
All right, any other council comments? So just for the public, on our agenda this evening, there is no workshop open to the public. We do have a workshop that is closed to the public, and the purpose of this workshop is to do our yearly performance evaluation of our city administrator, Jennifer Levitt. And so I'll just mention it out here in public that we will be closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05, subsection 3C, to conduct a performance evaluation of city administrator Jennifer Levitt. And so we'll be doing that in the conference room. So with that, hope to see everybody at the Holiday Train on Sunday. Take care.